I'd like to welcome all of you to our final budget meeting. It's May 23rd, 10:02. Join me on the Budget Page. Appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to introduce everybody. To my far left is Louise Calstrom, our county attorney, Tom Huxley Commissioner, myself, Doug Gold Commissioner, or Boyce Commissioner, John Huddle, County Council, Brendan Starbird, Administrative Assistant. Then we have our Budget Committee, Tom Brand and the Budget Chair, Tom Ostrowski, or Bill Ostrowski, sorry. And then we've got Carl King on the phone for their Budget Committee. So I'm going to turn the time over to our-
I have a question. Is Carl King on the phone? I think Carl King is watching remotely and will call in.
Oh, okay.
So he's not here exactly right now, I don't think.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Boyce has asked to, we give him three minutes to, for a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things, if I may, offer a moment of silence for another police officer slain, female officer in the state of Maryland. That makes the total number 26 in the United States this year. It's a growing number in an area that I know everybody in this room is concerned. Thank you. Then I'll have something else, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Let's do public comments before we really get started. David Barnes?
A moment of silence, if we may?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. Just 20 seconds.
Sure.
Much appreciated. Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Quickly, the last meeting we had, we witnessed the tactics of Commissioner Huxley. And when you're able to do the 60-minute edit and put it up on YouTube, that's how you destroy, or attempt to destroy, your political opposition. So when I, a year ago, January 4th, I took this oath, courthouse, to defend this county. And that's what I'm doing, and I'm going to continue to do that. We're about to turn the county over to an unelected official that's spent no more than 40 hours in Curry County. And while I wish him well, while I repeat again, I intend to work with him, I think that's really poking the citizens in the eye with the 8,000 votes that I got on this last election and the responsibility that's related to that. So I'm going to make a motion for the Budget Committee, and I'd like to have a voice vote, if I may, Mr. Chair, that we revisit or reset the Commissioner's salary, subject to the conditions that I offered. And been unable to coordinate or get that motion done. So I make a motion that we reset the, through the Budget Committee, the Commissioner's salary. You saw in the video that Mr. Huxley offered, that I did clearly state that it was a one-year thing that I was willing to do. And we also talked about future Commissioners a year ago as well. So I'm looking for a second on that motion.
Anybody wish to offer a second? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. David Barnes would like to make a public comment?
Uh, we're the sheriff.
Oh, yeah, let the sheriff, yeah, I'm sorry.
Morning, Budget Committee Sheriff Ward. I wasn't here Monday. I was, left Sunday and went up and spent two days with the Oregon State Sheriff's Association's meetings with the sheriffs. And then I was, it was my understanding that there was some talk about taking the money out of the step increases for the union negotiations, which union negotiations, to my knowledge, weren't supposed to be until 3 o'clock this afternoon, but apparently they're going on right now. I wasn't invited by the Commission to do that, which is highly irregular, if you ask me. Historically, it's been on behalf of the county, it's the sheriff, the HR Director, the Finance Director, and one Commissioner. But they've asked, just one attorney that they hired to do the negotiations as part of the county. I'm going to go ahead and sit in on that. But what I understand is that their county's saying, no new money coming into, for any step increases for the deputies. Well, that puts us right back into where we were here to begin with. I mean, well, I'm losing deputies because I can't pay them and I can't, you know, their pay is so low at this point, and you're taking away something that they already have. It doesn't make sense to me. It needs to be budgeted in and then negotiated, but if you negotiate something that's not budgeted in, then you have to go back and find out where the money comes from. I'm just saying, don't take away what is rightfully theirs in, for their pay. That's not really all I have to say.
I, our reasoning was, because the, is that the 2%?
No, that was Road Department.
Okay.
This was the, usually, when we budget, we usually budget those steps, and even if, whether or not we're in a negotiation year or not. However, this year, when we budgeted for it, it's been taken to say that that's setting for the negotiations, and so that's why it was taken out on Monday.
Okay. So you're asking for it to be put back in, but we don't know what the amount's going to be?
Well, I can guarantee you-
I know what the amount is, because I did the changes.
So we already know that negotiations are done? Or negotiations are-
No, I don't know what the amount is, but if you put just the step back in, I know what that is, because that's what we did-
Here's probably what's going to happen. The Union's going to balk on that and say, no way. And then they're going to take it to arbitration. And arbitration, I've been told by certain people and the Union, that it's going to cost three, at least three times, three times more than what it is for what if the step increases were going to be to go in, and that the county will probably lose. So if they want to take the arbitration and then it costs a lot more money paying for the attorney fees and all that, you know, that's, that's a decision that, you know, the County Board's going to have to make. But to give what they already have, is, the pay scale has never really changed for a long time. It's just, it's just the people who are starting at the bottom will have their step increases once a year at a 5% increase. And plus, any incentive, like when you get your intermediate or your advanced certificate, that's another 5%. They want to take all that away. If we take all that away, we, there's no incentive for my deputies to stay here. They're already, the other agencies are already getting more money than what we are. If you look at the paper the last week, or I think, Brookings has just negotiated a huge raise for their officers. And here we are, I'm going to try to keep my deputies from going there? That's going to be a real tough job to do, and they don't have no job security and, and no pay increases.
Okay. Any comments from the Committee? Should we think about revisiting this? I know we want to put this thing to bed, but this could be a quick thing. What's the impact, financial impact?
Um, I just looked at the, this change that I haven't handed out yet. The total amount between Civil Criminal Patrol, which was $23,506, the jail, which was $17,386, and 911 Communications, which was $4,281. The total is $45,173 to put them back in.
Okay.
And, and the other, the savings, you had me put in a transfer to the Towers Capital Fund. And that total transfer amounted to $96,300. If I take this out, it'd be a little over $45,000.
But it can cost you three times or more than that if it goes to arbitration, because I know the Union will not go for the, for that. I'll guarantee you.
For the cut?
For the cut.
Open discussion, would you guys?
I think it's kind of hard to set in a raise before negotiations have taken place. If negotiations take place and there is a raise, I would think that we could do a supplemental budget. Is that true or false? I would say that's true, and what I would do is, if we did that, was what we could do right now, which would reduce the transfer out to the Towers Capital Fund.
Could you repeat that, please? Reduce for-
I would change, if we had to do it after negotiations, I would take the budget that we have made to transfer out to the Towers Capital Fund, and I would reduce that amount by the amount that we would have to support any negotiations.
Ms. Huxley? We shouldn't even be talking about union negotiations when we're, you know, out like this with dollars, when we're just beginning negotiations. And I had, with additional questions, including a breakdown of the $220,000 that was referenced for these types of things, or it was generally, I was asking what was in that $220,000 that was added to the budget, but we shouldn't even be talking about union negotiations.
Well, you, we are, because you said you're taking no new money to put into the negotiations. You're not giving them any step increases, so you've already brought that forward, and now we have to negotiate that. And I'm just saying, the Union, when they, in their negotiation right now, will not go for that, which will send the county into arbitration. And it's going to cost a hell of a lot more. And we've already, we already know that our deputies are low-paid, and there's not job security, and that's why they're leaving, that's why I can't keep anybody. We're a training ground. We need to change that. We need to turn that, turn that around. Don't mess with their, with their livelihood. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we reverse our decision and put the money back in, transfer it out of the tower.
Second, Mr. Chair, thank you.
I, I, yeah, Ms. Huxley?
Now that we have a second, I have a question. Are we, for this vote, going to, and I guess I'm looking at County Council here, you know, you said Carl King is watching, we think, or to try and get a hold of him to participate in this vote, or, or not? Just, that's a question.
He is, he is traveling. I think what he said was to call him on his cellphone, because he'll be on I-5 and could have some reception.
That was his number, I'll give him a call.
Okay.
It's the King's phone.
Is Carl King, I need the mic.
Is Carl King available?
I'm sorry, who's, uh, who's calling?
It's Mr. Ostrowski from the Budget Committee, Curry County. He was supposed to be in this meeting.
Yeah, actually, Carl is driving, we're on the Great Vine coming out of Los Angeles, so there's no way he can talk.
Yeah. Can, can he pull over?
No, not on the Great Vine, there's no, can't do anything for, for a little bit.
Can he put him on speakerphone on his cellphone?
Maybe another 10 miles, or 5 miles, or something like that, but we can't do it right now. Can he call as soon as we can get to a left there?
You can, you don't have to, there's no time requirement to vote right now, if you want to wait till he's-
Yeah, have him call us as soon as possible, please.
I will, as soon as possible. As soon as we get off this, um, this part of the freeway, I'll have to call.
Thank you. Okay, so let's, let's table the motion until we get Carl on the line. Scott? Forrest?
Foss.
He has it coming out, you need to hand it on to the Administrative Assistant.
Hello, Scott Foss, 29795 Ellensburg Avenue, Gold Beach. Here, just real quick to remind everybody and also invite again you Commissioners to the timber rally this Saturday at 4:00 PM. Really like to see your participation, whether you agree with anything that's being said or not. You do represent everybody in the county, and I think it's important for you folks to be there. Second, it, when it comes to the budget, I personally have read the entire county budget in the last two weeks, and really gone through it a lot. One thing I've learned is, my hat's off to all of you that have participated and have read it and understand it, because there's an awful lot to it. So I can't really say a whole lot to my true feelings on what's going on here, but what I do want to say, you folks have been voted on our resources, and now I'm hearing that you're not willing to vote on our sheriff getting that extra money for the extra deputies in a positive manner, and the raises possibly, and money to stop them from getting raises. At this point, Johnny Ward's been here a long time, and he's damn good at what he does. And I really think you should take him into a serious consideration when you make a vote that represents all the citizens of this county, especially ones that were born and raised here. Johnny Ward's good at what he does, he knows what he needs. And just like our timber resources, resources that you're not willing to vote as a group together to really get after getting our timber resources back, Johnny Ward's going to lose his employees, because you won't possibly give him that position to keep them. Our timber resources, South Coast Lumber's going to lose their employees. We're going to lose the log truck drivers, we're going to lose lots of money to the schools, because if we don't have logs, there is not going to be a mill running very much longer, because the employees are going to have to go to work somewhere else, just like his deputy's going to have to go work somewhere else. You guys need to get that logging straightened out, so we can bring that resource back to our schools and to everybody else. So again, I hope you come to the rally. We're definitely inviting you. If you'd like to speak, I'm sure somebody would be happy to talk to you about that. Have a good day.
Thanks for your comments. David Barnes?
David Barnes, I just want to reiterate what I said the other day about fully funding the Commissioner's position at the salary set by the Compensation Board. I think it's, you know, a really bad thing that you're going to hamper the incoming Commissioners, incoming Commissioner, whoever it may be, whether it be Ms. Thompson or Mr. Pash, both have said they wish to work for these amounts set by the Compensation Board. If you, Commissioner Huxley and Commissioner Gold, don't want the money, fine, don't take it, but as of January 1st, when a new Commissioner's come on, I think that the Commissioner position should be fully funded. That, and again, I want to reiterate that I think you're making a big mistake if you don't rescind this offer to Mr., Mr. Schroeder. You, the three of you at this table have absolutely zero experience on dealing with the County Administrator, except for Mr. Hitt. He's your only point of comparison, and Mr. Hitt, quite frankly, was a diamond that we found and have now lost. I, from what Mr. Schroeder has said, and what I've read about him, he does not have the experience to deal with this. He told me that the first thing that he does when he has a problem with people on a panel not getting along, is to go ahead and hire an arbitrator to come in and try to mend things between people. Obviously, that's not happening here, so he's already talking about wasting our money before he's even here. You know, I just, I think it's a bad decision. The money would be much better spent refunding the steps for the sheriff's officers. It's not a raise, like you said it is, it's a natural progression in their pay scale at the job that they're at. It is not a raise. It's, you know, I just, what you're doing here, you know, is, I believe, to be very short-sighted and is going to hurt the county in the long run. Commissioner Huxley, you're done. Please don't hurt us anymore on your way out the door. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, so, uh, let's, let's proceed with the option, we're going back and discuss the sheriff's salary issue when Carl gets on the phone. Or if you don't want to wait, we can discuss it now and then vote on it. We do have a quorum, so there's no reason to really wait for him. There was a motion made that we reinstate the, uh, the cost of the step increase, and the impact was $45,000. We're not coming up with a new $45,000 requirement, we're just, it's a, but we're taking it away from the, uh, Tower Fund that we had set up yesterday. But I also agree with the sheriff that if you go to arbitration, it gets really expensive. You're going to eat through that $45,000 before you even know what happened to you. So again, I'd like to make the motion that we reinstate that salary.
I think the motion is still on the table.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. Could we include in that motion rescinding the offer to Mr. Schroeder? Because of the $50,000 severance, that would somewhat solve the problem right there. So I don't know if you are in favor of that, or if the testimony has affected your consideration there, but I would offer you that, and certainly I, go ahead.
The Budget Committee cannot rescind an offer that the Board of Commissioners has made.
So I would need a second here.
No, because this is a Budget meeting, not a Board meeting.
Okay. So I led you astray there, sorry, Mr. Chair.
That's fine. I wasn't going to allow it anyway, so-
But at the same time, I thought, on the motion that you're talking about, that is pending and tabled, I thought we were going to wait for Carl King to call in, and I think if Louise has things to present, we go on, and then when Carl calls in, we, we stop everything and go to that, that motion.
All right, we can do that.
Okay. Earlier this morning, Commissioner Huxley mentioned some questions that he asked of me, I'm going to pass that out.
Oh, you were able to, to get the answers there. Thank you.
I guess, Mr. Chair, if I could, I did say the Budget Committee cannot undo a decision the Board of Commissioners makes, and Budget Committee member Commissioner Boyce's motion was to rescind the offer to Clark Schroeder, so my answer was technically correct, but I, I think if I understand Commissioner Boyce's request, it would actually be that the Budget Committee not fund the position. So I don't know if that changes anything, but the Budget Committee does make decisions on how much funds to put in any, any particular position.
So would you be interested in amending our motion, reflecting the, changing that portion of his Compensation Package?
No, I don't think, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it would be proper to amend the motion. For several, I've never met the gentleman. You know, one individual got up and, and spoke. I, I don't know the background of this guy, I haven't seen his resume, I don't know if he's qualified or not, not to fund his employment. The three Commissioners, you guys have interviewed this individual. Obviously, you felt comfortable enough to hire him, with the exception of Mr. Boyce. So I, I just, I couldn't make that amendment, I'm sorry.
I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think his qualifications are irrelevant. I think it's, it's really an issue of priorities here. That would be my opinion on what we can afford.
Yeah, but you guys discussed this even before I, you know, before I even got here, and you guys hired him. Obviously, you guys did have a discussion somewhere along the line, the two of you, which was, the majority decided to hire this guy.
Well, and also-
I'm a little complex why you would change it at the last minute.
And the position was funded by the last Budget Committee.
Okay.
And it's proposed to be funded by the Budget Officer and, anyway.
Yeah. I think the idea of a County Administrator is great, because it gives the employees of the county a, a central person to go to, and for that person to know everything that's going on within the departments that he's supporting, to make sure that they're more effective and efficient and so forth. I think it's a great idea. And, you know, for just that reason, I don't think you should rescind the order, you know. If he's not qualified, once he gets here, then you have the, then you have the opportunity to fire him and pay a severance or whatever it is. But you've already made that decision. I can understand if the county was going to go bankrupt and you didn't have any money to pay for him, then you might want to rescind it, but that's not the case yet. So that's my reasons for not offering to put it on there.
I'll just say that two of the Commissioners felt so strongly about this issue that we lowered our salary to way below, so that this position could be funded.
Yeah.
And I'm still of that position, that's what I ran on. So I'm a woman of my word.
Okay. All right, let's go on.
Okay. This was an email I received late yesterday afternoon from Commissioner Huxley. The first page and top of the second page are comments. But I wanted to discuss the questions that are on page two. Question number one, what was the total of all increases included in the original budget May 7th, 2018, for non-represented employees and elected officials? I have actually given that out, information out, number one, in this comparison, to budgeted employees, adopted budgeted employees and proposed. Also have handed out what the payroll schedule of the proposed budget. And Mr. Huxley also has this same schedule as adopted from last year. I, I put it to the Budget Committee, whether they want me to go through and do a minute-by-minute total of these, of information that Mr. Huxley could get himself off the handout that he already has.
Have you presented those questions to all the members here?
I have handed this memo out.
Okay, thank you. Looking at the same thing, okay.
And question number two, what was the total of all Teamster employees' step increases in the original budget? I think we just answered that, $45,173. Was the total of all increases in all topics discussed above, remaining at the end of the meeting, May 21st, 2018? And on Monday, I handed out changes to the proposed budget that has all those changes in it. I have another handout for today, for all the changes that we did on Monday. So I think that Mr. Huxley also has that information. And what was the itemized breakdown of items comprising of the 220 above? That's also at the bottom of this handout of the payroll. There was a calculation showing what that payroll totaled, what the previous, the adopted budget from last year totaled, and the difference between the two, the difference of the increase, and I took off the four deputies and the assessors' increase for his pilot program. So the 220 is just basically $224,507. I rounded it to $220,000, and it includes last year's negotiations. And I apologize if anything in my budget message inferred in any way that when I said negotiations, I was talking about the current ongoing negotiations. I was talking about the settled contracts from last year that were, happened after the adopted budget. Anything that was done in those negotiated contracts are in this budget, and that's what I meant by that. I think this is the second time that I have- Um, I, I think this is the second time that I have made that clear. It's, I know that the Currie Coastal Pilot said it include a proposed to pay for anticipated wage increases. That was an error comment by the pilot. It was for ones that had already happened. So, the itemized breakdown of items, Mr. Huxley already has that information. It's this handout and the one that he already has from the adopted budget. So, I'm, I, I really don't know if the Budget Committee wants me to do any additional work on these questions, other than what the comments that I have just made.
Mr. Huxley?
All I was asking for, we get all these things over a week, okay, a week and a half. All I was doing was going to what source, you know, uh, the accountant to ask. And, and question two was answered. And that's the, the type of thing that I was after. What were the, the numbers when we go through all those explanations? I, I didn't go back, I wouldn't now, to, to go back through all the documents that we've been handed to get those numbers on it. Uh, I was after a number in number one, a dollar amount, because I want to see what, when we were, we're looking at the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, which was a very large number, a single number to, to me, in the original budget message, not defined or not itemized. I wanted to get that itemized, because with all the changes we made, especially primarily on Monday, the twenty-first, where did all that come? You know, how much was in there that may have been coming from the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand? And with the answers to these questions, of which, yes, some, somewhere, you know, amongst all these sheets, uh, Louise is saying that, you know, if you add, subtract, and do this and do that, you know, it's there. I'm not prepared to do that. I, I was prepared to, to try and get the numbers, so I could see, do we have anything extra in that twenty thousand that we really had already had included in the budget, that we can pull out and use for the towers or other things? That was the purpose of, of these four questions.
Okay. Does any other of the committee members have the same concerns as Mr. Huxley? Or we feel pretty comfortable about that? You know, uh... Louise, how, how long would it take you to do something like this, to answer, you know, throw it all together?
I spent like sixteen hours...
Okay, that's enough.
Doing the handout that I did that told, um, the, the changes from the budgeted payroll to the eighteen-nineteen, nineteen proposed budget payroll. And it, I spent all day Friday and most of the day Saturday, uh, doing these five pages, because I was asked to do this. It doesn't give you a total dollar amount, it just tells you what was changed. And I think that basically, from what we did on Monday, discussing these things that changed, that, um, that really kind of affected, uh, what we wanted in the budget, which was, um, the assessor adding a COLA, um, the district attorney adding a step, the road department adding COLAs, and, um, a, uh, step increase on the veterans that we did not discuss during those department, and that we, um, decided which one of those we were keeping and which ones we weren't, which basically we did not keep any of them. That's listed on this changes, and its dollar amounts are on these changes. Um, so, I really see no reason to add any other financial information. I think I have given all the information.
Right. I, I agree with you, and, uh, you know, there's, I think there's a, a period where the budget goes to the public. There's a couple more meetings to actually put this final, that you, as the commissioners, can revise the budget.
If you want penny by penny, what's changed in the general budget.
No, I don't want you to do that. No, I won't, I won't ask you to do that, I would never.
That was never the purpose.
Okay.
That's, that's absurd. That was not the intent, Chair.
Okay. Uh, I feel comfortable with the way I understand the budget to be. I think the other commissioners do. If you don't speak up, uh, if you want clarification, I think that's something that should be worked out between you and Louise. But I would suggest you don't interfere with getting this budget out, so that she could meet her timelines for everything. Uh, so let's go on.
Okay, I am, um, going to hand out the changes from the Monday's proposed budget. And, uh, hang on a second, I'll get yours.
Wow, this is good.
Okay, so these are all the changes that we did, um, from Monday's meeting. Um, I actually have another handout, which is a, um, it's kind of also requested. And this is, um, a, kind of a, an appropriation level, um, type summary of the budget, as it sits right now, before we make any more votes, as we were of, of, and a meeting last, uh, Monday. So, um, I'm gonna hand that out, too.
You've been pretty busy, haven't you?
It's amazing.
So these are the new budget totals for all funds. The first, um, the first total is just the general fund and all the departments in there. Um, the second total is all of the other funds. And then I have a total that encompasses all funds. Um... So, that's where we are right now, with no other actions. That would be, this would be the dollar amounts of the approved budgets.
Okay.
We have a, um, motion that's on the table to change that. Um... It...
We change the step increase for the sheriff, wouldn't affect, it wouldn't affect the bottom line anyways.
It will, actually, it does not change the bottom line, because what it does is it takes it out of one expenditure, which is the transfer to the fund and back up into the sheriff. So, the total amount on this budget would still be the same...
Right.
As was presented here. It just, there would be a couple of categories that are changed in the, um...
Right.
In the general fund, it would move out of that transfer in, into the, um, personnel column.
Right. Okay.
So, um...
Well, looking at the changes to the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen proposed budget, as of, uh, May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, does any, anybody on the commission, on the committee, uh, have any questions regarding that? I think they're pretty accurate, or they are accurate, actually. Anybody have any questions to Louise regarding this?
I believe that, um, that, uh, the Veterans Service Officer is here and would like to speak about the item that, um, removed his step increase. Um, he didn't, he was not here when we discussed it, and I think he would like to give you some background on, um, the reason for that...
Okay.
Request in the budget.
Sure. Well...
Good morning, Board of Commissioners, how are you doing, Chair? Uh, so, I got a little anxiety when we were here last time, and I totally spaced it, that I had put the increase in my budget. Um, the reason I had asked for the increase is, my office is no longer in Gold Beach. I'm in Brookings, and then I have three pilot offices that I go to for outreach. Since I've moved to the office in Brookings, my job has increased dramatically. Uh, it's now the Currie County Resource Center. So we have ORCA in there with a veteran support group from ORCA. We have, uh, legal counsel that comes in. I have an, uh, an assistant now that I'm training to be the lateral to me. So now I'm also in a training position. So there's a lot more tasks and duties that I have to do in that position. And my job already, out of thirty-six counties, there's ten other counties that are about the appropriate numbers of me. And out of those ten counties that have the same POAs, powers of attorney for claims, roughly three of them, including myself, are the lower end. So the wage that I get already is on that lower end. I'm not asking for the full increase, I'm just asking for something if I possibly could. And I, I thought as a bargaining chip, because I wasn't asking for as much from the county for a contribution this year, because I got more for ODVA. There wouldn't really be too much.
He doubled his, um, his, uh, no, he doubled his grant. It was twenty-two or...
Forty-eight thousand, it went to ninety-eight.
Yeah. So he, he actually brought, um, about fifty thousand, or forty thousand into the...
And my goal for the next year, in regards to funding, what I'm trying to do is get grants together, so I could ask for less. The bare minimum I would have to ask from the counties for these years to come would be four grand to get that minimum contribution from ODVA. This year, I was not able to get grants together in time. My assistant is actually working out to see with the next budget year, if we can prepare for grants to get extra income, so that we have to ask for less. It's just this year I wasn't able to.
And, and I want to make the comment that in, in speaking with, um, with Tony yesterday, I also didn't catch a increase in an irregular salary, because, uh, the person that was budgeted last year, and then this was a new hire, and sometimes they're just hired at a different rate than the last person. But he did include, um, over what this person is being paid now, uh, a two-dollar an hour raise, but that's because during this next year, this person will have their certifications.
She will be able to do exactly like me. She will be nationally and state accredited within the next six months. So she'll be able to work claims to better utilize, to help our veterans in the community.
So he wanted to be able to...
So decrease my workload and increase the office's workload. And we already are increased.
And so he wanted to pay her, for, um, once she got her certificate, certification, pay her, uh, the, um, a salary or an hourly wage that recognized that certification.
And she's only a part-timer, so she's not full-time.
Right. Your, your department, is it self-funded then?
Ninety-eight thousand of it is through ORCA. The Department of Veterans Affairs, half is through the lottery dollars, the other half is based off of power of attorneys, so how many claims I file.
It's about fifteen thousand or so.
I think it was, yeah, I believe it was fifteen thousand, and I was getting some kickback for the internet costs. So I think by the time it was done, it was like fourteen thousand, five hundred.
That comes out of the general fund?
That comes out of the general fund.
And historically, it's been in the mid-thirties to mid-forties.
Okay.
The total, the total amount that you removed was three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
If you look over the last ten years historically, in the ten-year period, the lowest county contributions was twelve thousand, the second lowest was fifteen thousand. Then after that, it jumps into thirties, twenties, thirties, and forties. So in a ten-year period, on between those two lowest years that they contributed, which was two thousand, twelve and thirteen. And that was an unfortunate year, when our, one of my predecessors committed suicide that did this job.
Don't do that, please.
Don't do that, Tony.
Frank was a good guy.
Okay.
Yeah, wow.
All right. Uh, boy. You know, the, the thinking behind the recommendation to do what we did was because the county doesn't have any more new resources coming in.
I understand.
Okay, I mean, zero, basically. Except, you know, we get every year, basically. Uh, and so to try to reduce the cost of the county, that's the reason that we made that decision. Okay? In my mind, that decision was placed on cutting those departments that rely on the general fund. Obviously, you only rely on the general fund for fourteen thousand?
It was roughly fifteen thousand, and like I said, I had internet costs. It was going to be reimbursed from another department that's in our building, because like I said, it's not just me, there's four other services that aren't county services.
Okay. The same is if I do it for you, then everybody else is gonna come running in here saying the same thing. Uh... My...
Unfortunately, the person that could have backed me is the county administrator that's no longer here. He's the person I had these discussions with originally.
All right.
So I apologize for that. I wish I could have had him here, and I should have brought a email trail of it, but it was more face-to-face than anything, and that's what I am...
Right.
Legal counsel is.
Okay, so, so without that fourteen thousand, what, what, if I take out the fourteen thousand from your budget?
You, you would, I don't think you'd be taking out fourteen thousand from the budget. On the one-pager, if you look down...
It's three thousand.
It's in the middle. The, the step increase that he's proposing would be a three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollar, um, additional increase from the...
It would be...
I don't even know if it's an increase from the general fund contribution, the way he's talking about. He's, he's sub, he's reduced the general fund. It's almost like getting a different share of the general fund contribution, drawing the line differently, if I, if I'm using a kind of a bigger picture. If his total...
Before, before Monday, the, the, um, contribution from the general fund was around, and I don't, I don't have that in front of me, but it was about fifteen thousand or so.
Yeah.
This reduced that and put it to the transfer.
Which was twelve, I think.
Um, so, if you, if you put it back in, it's still around a fifteen thousand dollar contribution from the general fund, out of, uh, about a hundred thousand dollars of grants that he, um...
Right.
Uh, has got for the, the support of his position. And then the, um, what it would do, do is further reduce that, uh, transfer out of towers, that's ninety-six now, reduce it, or minus the forty-five, reduce it by almost four thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna have to be excused, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, okay.
So I actually have a question after.
And I, I, I'll try and call in within five minutes, and whoever calls first between Mr. King and I will, because I don't think we're gonna be set up on a conference call. I think we're just gonna have one line open, but I could be wrong on that. We all had conflicting schedules this week. I tried to make today work.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I have one comment.
Sure.
Um, as I recall, Julie Swift, yesterday, this was something about the, the, uh, salary schedule and jumping, what was it, three steps? No, it was one and a half.
One and a half.
And it seems to me like we've got a job description issue here, not a step issue. I don't...
I'm not clear with the job description issue.
You were telling us that your job description has changed.
Oh, yeah, now I have a lot more responsibility. I'm still the VSO.
That's what I'm...
Now I'm running the office with other services, and I also have their jobs that I'm assisting with, because our jobs all tie together.
Yeah, I think it's still the same job description. It's just that...
Much bigger case load.
He has a much bigger, um...
And training position now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but a lot of people could say that, too, you know? I, I understand. And I'm not saying that you're lying or anything else, but, uh...
But I do have a question, what you said about the fourteen thousand. So are they reducing that whole general contribution? Because if they are, then I won't get any ODVA dollars. So then, does I have to have money from the county to get that ODVA?
I'm opening it right now. What, it was, before we did this last change, it was, um, sixteen thousand, five thirty-two.
From the general fund?
From the general fund, and... So it'd be twelve thousand, seven seventy-three.
So that's, without my assistants raising a money?
Though, they have the assistants raising. It, I did not change that, because of the certification thing, that, uh, once that person is certified, they, um, would go from twelve dollars to fourteen dollars an hour. It's an irregular, um... So, it would, you would have a general fund contribution without yours, the step increase that was taken out, um, twelve thousand, seven seventy-three. Does that still need your...
Yeah, yeah.
Catching?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and what I was looking at is, when I broke it down into the pagebacks, to be honest, it was basically less than a hundred dollars a paycheck, is what it was gonna be. We get paid bi-weekly, so that's what I was looking at, is, you know, if I was to get a... Is what it was gonna be, we get paid bi-weekly, so that's what I was looking at is, you know, if I was to get an increase, if I could. It, it is a tasking job, just like every other job in this county, you know?
Uh, and on the other hand-
We, we gave everyone a hundred, we gave them a hundred.
One of the ones that got the hundred dollars.
Hundred twenty dollars.
Hundred, hundred dollars a month, uh, insurance um, contribution increase, which is actually better because you don't have to pay-
So it's really more than a hundred.
Yeah. I don't know if you knew that or not.
I haven't been able to follow my, my office, like I said, I'm booked a month and a half out, so I hardly have spare time. Today I had to readjust my whole schedule just to make it up here.
Mr. Chair, if I could, and putting on my interim county administrator hat, so if, if I understand, last year, the general fund for veterans was at this level, through Tony's success with getting grants, they're proposing to reduce the general fund level by roughly three thousand. And if, if I'm understanding his proposal, it's, well, can we just leave the general fund level as it is and let me get more of the benefit of, of the grant that he brought in to the tune of roughly three thousand, so I-
Yeah.
If I'm understanding this correctly, it's sort of a wash from last year to this year on the general fund, maybe a little bit up.
Actually, last year, the general fund had uh, the budget contrib- the general fund contributed forty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-four. With the grant that he got-
Reduced that significantly.
It reduced it to sixteen five thirty-two.
So all, all he's asking for, I mean, one way to look at what he's asking for is for him to just retain more of a share of the grant that he got. He's already shaving the general fund down considerably and just, um, and it would, if, all we would be doing is budgeting for it and then he would have to make this same presentation more or less to the Board of Commissioners to actually seek the, the actual increase. It's just a question of how do we allocate the general fund slash grant funding of his position? But again, I'm trying to think, he's mentioned he had conversation with the interim county administrator. I have to believe that was some of the thought process involved is, is um-
Yeah, because from my understanding, I knew that I couldn't get a raise just from you guys putting the money, then it has to still be presented to the board. So that's the next step for this, they can't, I, by putting this funding in there, it doesn't mean I automatically have the raise July first. I gotta present it to the board and ask them to give me an increase, the same with my assistant, but if I don't have the funding in there, I can't ask for that.
It would, like you mentioned, that, that, you know, we gave everybody a hundred dollar increase, basically. Uh, tax-free, in a sense, uh. And can he put in for a salary increase with his necessary forms and get it approved and do amendment to the budget?
So if, and again, you're gonna be proposing a budget, the other thing that the Board of Commissioners will do, this would come to the Board of Commissioners one more time and so long as any particular increase isn't greater than X amount-
Right.
They could, they could make that change, you know, and not have to come back to the Budget Committee, both on a budgetary level.
Right.
And a, so again, it's up to you all um, to, to talk about it in the first instance, and I see you have some other folks here who have some comments.
Okay, yes, Mr. Huxley?
I, I agree with, you know, you open, if, if you do for one, what's good for one, or good for all, but I think, let me get to put this-
Carl's in.
How's my, are you up here? This is Court.
Oh my god.
Okay, Court.
Can we, can we, we can go down, John?
We turn it down?
Oh my god, that was loud.
I'm on the phone, I, I had coverage for about ten, fifteen minutes.
Okay, thank you.
That's a really loud speaker.
We could, we could consider, you know, county council as made reference to, you know, the, uh, as interim. But a suggestion, because this would be, um, I would suggest as a, a possibility, um, that because the things like this can come back to the board after the budget's approved for amounts like this without involving the Budget Committee, okay, for future discussions. I would suggest that um, Tony interface, you know, with the, the new county administrator on who will be coming just after, well, what is it, June, June fourth, okay? And see what can be done at that level, which is where I think it should be done anyway. And uh, if it's not approved now, it could easily be, if it is approved at a later date, which it can, or can't be, okay? Uh, it could be with a supplemental budget and still accomplish the same thing.
Right.
And there's just one more thing, I know you said, uh, Mr. Chair, that if we do it for him, everyone's gonna be coming asking. I just don't know that everyone else has brought in additional grant money to reduce the contribution to the general fund of the department, I think-
And that, and that makes him unique, okay, very, very unique. Uh, I, I really don't, you know, we haven't come up with any new sources of revenue and I, and I hate to increase our expenses without any new sources of revenue and I know you're pretty much self-funded, uh. I, I think you should go down the road that Mr. Huxley mentioned.
So my question to you is, that's what I've already done with my previous administrator, that's why this was prepared in this budget and I apologize for not presenting it originally. Like I said, usually this is something that causes me a lot of anxiety. So that was my own blackout, but it was on the budget, it was prepared ahead of time. And I was told that if I didn't allocate for this money, that would be frivolous in the future.
Right, but at the same, I understand, but at the same time, you didn't know that we gave you a hundred dollar raise for the health insurance. Uh, so I, my suggestion, and I'd like to hear from the committee, my suggestion is that we leave the budget as it is and uh, highly recommend that you go to the, to the new county administrator. Explain to you, explain to him how your department works and what, the type of raise that you're after. And then if he feels that it's reasonable, I feel like it's reasonable. Uh, but at the same time, I know I've already given, you know, the committee has already given everyone a hundred dollar a month raise for their uh, insurance, that you and him come up to an agreement, then go in front of the Commissioners. Yeah, I don't mean to kick the can down the road, but uh, I don't think I am, I, I just think that's the way, best to do.
Well, what you're saying, like I said, once I've already done, so I guess I'll have to do it again, but I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Carl, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Can anyone hear Carl here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Carl, I want you to keep talking.
Mr. Voice here, I'm having trouble here. Okay, I'm, I'm actually at a rest stop at the moment.
Okay, we hear you.
Apparently they can read.
I really don't think I'd be able to follow the discussion.
Right, because you can't live stream?
I cannot live stream now.
You need, you need to make an informed vote if you're gonna make a decision, so you have to have the information. It would be hard for you to, to vote without knowing the details of the discussions and the deliberations. Um, so we're either gonna have to keep you on the line like this throughout the conversation or, or um, or just have you be absent today, I think.
Okay, is there a discussion of changing the votes that were taken Monday?
Well, um, apparently Louise sent out a, a summary sheet and I guess if, if you want, we have Court Voice on the other line. We did say we were gonna hold off on a, it's kind of a reconsideration of an item you have had, I think it was, I was talking about Court Voice earlier, had the motion to reinstate Commissioner salaries per the, per the Salary Committee recommendation and we're gonna hold off on discussing and voting that till you got here. I think you are familiar with that enough to be able to vote on it.
Right.
Um, so, um, is that something the Budget Committee is willing to do right now? I think we have Court Voice on the other line and um, Carl King on this line.
What was the motion, can you read? Can you, can you read back the motion, please?
Court, Court Voice, are you still there?
Yeah, there was no second, it was motion.
Well, I-
The one that's on the floor is, is whether or not to put the sheriff's-
Oh, I apologize, it was not to raise, it was, it was-
Voices, we, we've already discussed.
Yes, so there was a motion and it was from Mr. Oshowski, correct, to, to, or I could be wrong, but I thought it was to put, put back into the budget, was it the step increases that were removed from the sheriff?
Right.
And then-
In the end, Carl, the impact would be zero, we were gonna put any additional money that we found with the cuts that we proposed into a, into the tower fund to start funding that for future repairs or necessary repairs. That was the reason for the uh, decision regarding the raises.
Steps.
Steps, I'm sorry, with the steps.
But there's another thing you need to be aware of, Carl, negotiations have not even started with Teamsters, they're barely starting. And by doing that, we're kind of saying, you know, whatever, we're giving it to them before we negotiate it. And it can be rescinded.
Well, Louise, Louise did send to me the documents that she handed out this morning that itemized the changes that took out the step increases from all departments.
Right.
Uh, so I have reviewed that and I have reviewed and understood uh, the motion that was, I, I thought also agreed to on Monday that those found monies would be set into the Tower Capital Reserve Fund to start paying for the towers. And I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. Uh, I, I, I'm not inclined, I don't think, anything I hear uh, today is going to change my mind. Uh, we should not, those increases should never have been put in the budget by our administration to begin with.
And if I could, Mr. King, one of the comments that the sheriff made was uh, along the lines of uh, these guys are strike prohibited and they go to mediation and, you know, the likely outcome of a mediation would be in their favor and, and whatnot and, you know, that's, that was a, a thumbnail of what the sheriff said, just so you, you said if anything would change your-
Plus, plus the cost of mediation.
I understand that, I've, I've, I've been, you know, involved with making budgets for municipality where prior and police could not strike uh, some thirty-five years.
Yep.
It's no different in Oregon than it was other places and I'm, I'm not inclined to adopt a budget before negotiations are completed that includes a pay raise.
And the other thing the sheriff said is, uh, separate from that, he said that um, we are, we're basically a training ground for other departments because our pay scale is so low that uh, people come in here and then they can find a higher-paying job other places. For instance, the city of Brookings just gave a raise to their uh, Public Safety Police Department and so he was saying for those reasons um, that we should, we should budget for it. He was kind of, at the same time, I think advocating uh, for an increased compensation package for um, you know, peop- his employees in his department so he could keep them and continue his function. So I'm trying to really just repeat back some of the details of the, of the conversation so that you're fully aware when it comes time if you're gonna vote on this.
Right, and that, you know, and I appreciate the sheriff's position and I, I, I sympathize with it, but I don't think this is the time to address it. It, it's uh, we, we have a process, they've chosen to unionize and there's union negotiations about to uh, get underway and I think the Budget Committee uh, needs to await the outcome of that and if the result of the Board of Commissioners negotiating with the Teamsters results in the same pay raise or a higher one or a lower one, that's up to the Board of Commissioners and if it takes coming back to the Budget Committee, the Budget Committee can meet again uh, after that is concluded and take it into account. But I'm, I'm not, you know, as sympathetic as I am to the need to have higher pay for law enforcement. I, I, I'm not sympathetic to doing it out of step with how one is supposed to deal with these things.
Yeah, you know, I think the, the issue, I think one part of the problem is that this is the way it's always been done. You know, it's that if you don't put it in the budget, you're not gonna get it. And I think, I think that's the, you know, the crux of the thing, you know, he's, the sheriff is concerned, you know, that if it's not in the budget and the negotiators come to an agreement about a step increase, you know, and there's nothing in the budget, then you can't comply with the, the union negotiation or whatever and we end up in arbitration.
You do comply with the-
Okay.
Uh-oh, Court, Court Voice has signed off, he lost coverage, he said.
Okay, so I, I think that's one of the main concerns of the sheriff, I, you know, I, I think-
I think we put that to rest because we talked to Louise about changing it if possible and she says it is possible.
No, I, I agree, I believe the motion-
You would have to find the funding, if you negotiate for something, just like when they negotiated last year, we had to find the funding to fund that uh, um, that negotiated settlements and so if we negotiate and we settle, we have to find the funding.
So this is, this is a-
Well, we could do it the same way we're doing now.
Right, and this, this is a motion to change what you have already sort of directed Louise to do.
Right.
And if the maker of the motion, you could resolve this in two ways. Uh, you could either vote to either approve or deny the motion, or the maker of the motion, I think, could withdraw the motion, so um, that's, because I, I don't know if there's more discussion on this, this is a revisiting of something you've discussed pretty, pretty, pretty in depth.
Thoroughly, right.
I'm not sure if he can, I didn't voice uh-
Second?
Second.
And he's not here, so yeah, sure, maybe you need to take a roll call vote on this. If you're ready for the vote.
Yeah, can, can you repeat the motion, please?
Brenda, you might need to get mic'd up, you might need to get mic'd up, Brenda, to- My recollection of the motion was to take out from the tower, oh, go ahead, so-
Mr. Ostrawski motion to reverse the decision.
Brenda.
Mr. Ostrawski motion to reverse the decision made to take away the sheriff's step increases and Voice seconded the motion.
And I think it would come out of the tower fund and back into there, so, because that's what's going on. So that's the motion.
Okay.
And take the money out of the tower budget.
Yep.
Right. Any further discussion on it?
Yeah.
Please say that again.
It would be taking the money out of the tower transfer, not the tower budget.
Right.
Correct.
So, uh-
Doesn't that affect a zero, it's just-
Right, essentially, if you look at the changes to the budget that Louise put out, the one-pager, there's changes to the Sheriff Civil, Sheriff Jail, Sheriff Communication to remove step increases from staff. Um, after hearing from the sheriff, uh, Mr. Oshowski voted to reverse those and those are gonna go into the-
Motion.
Tower.
What, correct, motion.
What, what are you saying?
I thought you said voted.
No.
Sorry, no, oh, maybe I did, no motion to um, reverse those and it was seconded by Voice, we waited for Carl King to get here to have discussion, so maybe Tom Brand, if you could, if that, that's kind of a talking explanation of what the motion was in the background, but if, if you have questions about what the effect of the vote is, what is your question?
It's, it's uh, I, I've been having a hard time focusing this morning. And it was hearing the words, the specific thing, if I could just repeat back to you my understanding.
Sure.
We're talking about redoing a step increase that we had taken away, we're adding that back in and we're funding that with money that the other day we had put into a tower.
Correct.
Sure.
Yeah.
So the, then that balance stays the same.
The budget stays the same, yeah.
I just have one more comment.
Okay.
If it's negotiated, that they get a raise, we could take it from the tower funds eventually, but I really hate to give a raise before it's negotiated, I think that's doing it backwards, in my opinion.
Is a step increase a raise? It's five percent each year, but, and that's a compounded five percent.
It is a negotiated item.
Is that considered a raise or is it a negotiated item?
It's not considered a raise, but it is negotiated.
Uh, which part of that is negotiated, the yearly, the five percent?
There's, there's three things in, in the um, financial impact of negotiations in payroll. Uh, insurance increases, step increases and COLA. So they have cost of, they could have a cost of living or a step or insurance or any combination of the three. That's the financial impact.
That's the financial impact of these, uh, negotiations with these unions.
And that's what they're negotiating right now.
So I'd just like to add that, that it, while I think it's true that most of those processes end up going with what the union asked for, it's not universally true. There have been places in Southern Oregon, of counties who are in financial difficulty where the mediator ruled against, well, the arbitrary, or it's specific and I'm not sure I have the right term.
Again, I, I, I understand you're trying to make a counter to the sheriff's point and-
Yeah, I don't, I understand not going to talk about budget.
Thank you.
I'm just saying that, that we spent a week and a half and if the numbers are right, we've increased our budget, the total of your budget from the proposed to what we have today of twenty-three thousand eighty-eight dollars. We've shuffled chairs, let's just get on with it. Okay.
So the call for a vote?
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes.
So you vote to make the change?
Right.
Tom Brand?
No.
Tom Hudson?
No.
Sue Gold?
No.
Carl King?
No.
Court Boyce?
He's off the call.
Just for the record, okay, thank you. Uh, Carl King, I'm not sure if you need, what else are we going to move on to next then? Is it, are we ready to perhaps vote to adopt a proposed budget or is, and with an amount? Or what, what step are we at?
That's where I am, I don't know if anybody has any other discussions. Um, once we do this approval, then it would be a, um, we would terminate the, oh. The only other thing that's on here is, there was a handout of minutes?
Thank you, we emailed minutes, we didn't provide you written copies of those. The minutes are from last year's Budget Committee session of five days approximately. Um, they've been, seven, they've been consolidated into one document with different sessions. Uh, Mr. Ostrowski, you would not be needed to vote, you weren't available to review them. It would be really great if this Budget Committee, who consists of a, certainly a quorum and a majority, there's only one different member from last year, if they could review those minutes and vote on them to approve last year's Budget Committee meeting minutes so that when the auditors came around, we could show the auditors that we actually had a Budget Committee-
That would be great.
Do this now, um, but, but that's, I know, that's almost like, ask, it could be the straw on the camel's back. Some of you, I think, are ready to vote on this budget and go back to your lives, so, um, it's just whether you want to do that or not. Worst case scenario, in my opinion, we would be able to provide the, the draft to the auditors. But, um, really, that's just a, a question.
So I have a question, we haven't really had a lot, at least I haven't, had a lot of time to review those minutes.
Not at all, no.
So could we review and then send you by email our vote? Would that be culture?
No, and actually, this, this has to be voted, since they're Budget Committee minutes, they have to be budget, but voted on by the Budget Committee. So if you do not approve them before this committee ends, uh, you either have to come back or we have to wait till next year when we reconvene as a committee to approve these minutes.
Or if, if this committee reconvenes in the, in the meantime. And the other odd part about it is, the Budget Committee can reconvene from time to time within its, for any purpose. And it's possible, if we really want to get these minutes done, I'd hate to do it, but we could reconvene you for a meeting to just review and approve those minutes only. If, it's up, but we wanted to give you the option today is really what it was about.
Could we take a break, review them, come back and vote on them so people don't have to come long distance?
I think, I think you could, but it, it just depends on whether, again, we want to give you the option. They came across my desk last night and I said, "Let's see how the Budget Committee feels about them." Um, so really, it's trying to just get it in front of you for some direction as much as anything.
Well, can you review them in fifteen minutes, recess for fifteen minutes, or I-
Can we vote to approve the budget that's submitted?
Carl, okay, so-
But once we do that, I believe we're done.
Yeah, so, um, so what I'm getting from-
I'm standing beside I-5, just north of the Great Bonnet, I'd like to get back on the road.
Okay, yeah. So it'll be just a little bit longer, Carl.
Anything for you, Carl. Yes, Mr. Hudson.
Let him wait.
Tom Hudson has something to say, so just hold your horses.
But, you, I can't review, I, I looked at those last night, you know, I pulled them up like at six o'clock or six-thirty and I'm tired, I said, "I'm not going to try and read twenty pages of-"
So maybe we should schedule, schedule another Budget Committee meeting and say a month from today?
That makes sense, it's just, again-
That would be great if, if that's, okay.
All right.
So make the motion that the-
Before we, we do that, I do have three corrections on this before it's brought back, so should I just say them now? Just say them now?
Yeah. Louise has three corrections, Carl.
On page two at the bottom, um, under Finance.
Can, can we just vote on the budget and you can deal with this paperwork when I'm not standing here beside a highway?
So Carl, yes, and the corrections she's mentioning are to the budget you're about to vote on, is what I understand.
Oh, okay.
The Budget Committee, the minutes, minutes.
No, we're not doing the minutes, Louise.
We're going to do another meeting.
I'm, I'm making a motion that the Budget Committee meet, uh, a month from today or so.
Let's not do that, we'd like to just go to the, we're not going to, we'll figure, staff will figure out when a good time is. We'll try to, we'll try to coordinate with you in the future about the minutes. But for now, Carl King would really like to try to get a vote to approve whatever budget is being presented.
Okay.
And Louise has printed up a motion for someone to entertain, I think. And you might want to read it out loud, whoever's going to.
I have one question for, for Tom Brand. Tom, did you say that the difference was like twenty-three thousand? Because I didn't have some of those other documents.
What I compared was the budget message at the beginning of our discussion.
Yeah, and that's what I didn't have here this morning.
And the, the number that's on this sheet.
Okay, the eight or what?
Difference is twenty-three thousand eighty-eight dollars.
That's from the top section?
Yes, the revenues, if you go over to the far corner.
Okay, that's this one, yeah, we're, we're pointing to the same thing. Eight million nine hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty-five?
Yeah.
Is that the, okay, so twenty-three thousand difference you'd seen.
So, just for the general public and newspaper and, and ours, I guess, consideration, the budget we, we're going to vote on is, is more than by twenty-two thousand dollars than the one that was put together with, uh, Mr. Hitt and whatever input from Commissioners and all the work done by, um, Ms. Calstrom. And, uh, our week and a half has added twenty-three, twenty-two thousand dollars to that. Okay. Okay, so, uh, I'd like to make a motion, move to approve the two thousand-
Okay, as a chair?
He can, but-
He can.
I can't do that?
Somebody else does the motion.
Want me to read it?
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner, go.
Uh, I move to approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen budget for Curry County in the amount of eight million nine hundred eighteen thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars for the general fund and forty-six million one hundred fifty-five thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars for the other funds and to approve the property tax rate of point five nine nine six cents per thousand dollars of assessed value.
Sir, second.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Carl King. Any discussion? Roll call vote then? Sue Gold?
Yes.
Tom Hudson?
Yes.
Carl King?
Yes.
Court Boyce, can you hear us?
He's not on the phone.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyce. There was a motion, Commissioner Boyce, to approve the twenty eighteen nineteen budget for Curry County in the amount of eight thou-, eight mil-
Do you want me to read it?
Eight million nine hundred eighteen thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars for the general fund and forty-six million one hundred fifty-five thousand six hundred twenty-seven for all other funds and to approve property tax rate at point five nine nine six per thousand of assessed, for a thousand dollars of assessed value. We were, uh, there was no deliberation on the motion unless you want to. And then, um, there was a vote, Sue Gold in favor, she made the motion, uh, I believe. Carl King seconded, Tom Hudson voted in favor, Carl King voted in favor. I, we're calling on you for your vote on the motion.
You say you're waiting for my vote now?
Yes, um, yes, we are, or if you want to speak to the motion.
I'm going to vote no and, uh, just clarifications, I may change my mind what it goes before the final on the, uh, the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner. Tom Brand? Vote?
Oh, aye, yes, approve.
Okay, and the Chair Ostrowski?
Yes, approve.
Okay, so five yes, one no. Um, any other business for the Budget Committee?
I don't have any.
Yeah, yesterday I, I talked about, uh, discussing shortly, briefly maybe, it's an important subject. You know, discuss sort of new sources of revenue for the, uh, county.
Carl, Carl King, if you want, we're going to discuss revenue sources for the county, it's up to you whether you need to participate in that or not.
Well, I, uh, I, I will pass on that at this time. I'm certainly willing to resume discussions with a Budget Committee or any committee starting next week as to revenue sources, uh, for the county. But I, I really need to get off the phone now. I appreciate the Economations, uh, staff and the committee have given me to allow me to participate on Monday and again today. Uh, thank you very much, I'm signing off.
Thank you, Carl, bye-bye.
So I'll open that up for a discussion if anybody had any thinking regarding that, the subject of how we, how do, are we going to increase revenue for the county? There's basically three ways of doing it, property tax, sales tax, or hotel tax. Anything else is, the amounts that you would gather would be pretty much minimal. When you're looking at the amount of money that we're taking out of the road fund to, uh, offset any shortfall that we're currently experiencing. And that is not sustainable. Yes, please.
I think we ought to be looking at a, a sales tax, at a luxury sales tax, so it's not going to hit the poorest in the community, those on fixed incomes. As far as a hotel tax, I think it could be a sales tax, thereby being able to be spent how we want it rather than being so narrowly, um, dedicated to whatever, you know, by the law. Um, this is done in other counties. I think we need to study what's happening in other counties or at least approach that as, as far as sales taxes. I know Yacht does a sales tax on their meals, ten percent. And that's restaurants, that could be restaurants countywide. I don't know what effect that would take, but that's something that ought to be studied.
The, the effect would not be significant, you know, when you look at the dis-, when you look at the county, there's roughly fifty-seven or sixty hotels in the entire county.
Mm-huh.
Okay, and it's probably double F for number of restaurants.
At least that's something I would-
Yes, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
That's just not the total answer, it can't be just one thing.
Well, that's a start.
Yes, it is.
But I think hitting people with property tax, it's not going to fly. They've tried ten times.
Yeah.
And you're just hitting one thing rather than, I, I think the tourists use the area and they're not being, you know, we're not having that resource at all.
What would you suggest as far as a tax rate for that concerning, for a hotel tax? Or whatever you want to call it?
Hotel, I would have to look at hotel taxes in other counties, see what, what they're doing. But I do know every time I go to a hotel, which is often, there is a significant tax paid.
Sure. In Ca-, in California, it's high as ten percent, twelve percent?
Mm-huh.
Okay.
And as a consumer of a hotel, when I go, I mean, it's, that's just part of the cost of doing, doing business.
Right.
You're not going to go in there and complain, "Oh, your taxes," I'd never heard anybody say that.
Yeah.
So.
So it-
I just like it when they, when they tell you the total cost and including the tax when you, they tell you how much your room's going to cost.
Well, when I go online to, to, um, negotiate or whatever, they always say the tax, so.
But you, I've got to believe that you understand that the only big source of revenue that you could possibly achieve in this county is through the increase in property tax. You know, your, your income from lumber activity is, is not going to be sustainable.
Well, and there are other ideas of getting some other revenue, getting some more economic activity. That's, that's a big thing. Just taxing the people to death isn't, isn't going to cut it.
No, no, I understand that.
You need to get some economic activity.
But looking at, looking at the current picture that we're in, the environment that we're in right now, you know, that's really your only source of income right now. You know, yeah, if I bring in HP or Google or somebody like that, yeah, they're, they're going to pay some more property taxes, but only a small portion of that is going to go towards the county. And, you know, you'd have to have a significant number of new businesses or new activity coming in the county. And the only thing that I heard when we discussed it with the economic development was a golf course. And that's going to increase property tax revenue a little bit and maybe some sales tax revenue if we decide to do a sales tax, but that's about it.
You know, there are other areas along the coast that do something called ecotourism and they've gotten huge federal grants for setting up some of these things. So you're not messing with the, the environment.
Okay.
So, just a thought, this isn't going to happen overnight, I'll tell you that.
No, I understand, and that, Commissioner Hudson?
Well, just to comment on your number two, there's much more to it and I, I agree with you that, that some of these others, it's, it's, they're not large numbers. But you mentioned sixty, I believe, hotels or motels, but, uh, you know, into the transient lodging tax, which is essentially what that is. If it falls within one of the cities, it's not within the county. So you not only have to look at the totals there, but you have to, you know, it, that number diminishes because you have, uh, Brookings, which is incorporated basically, Harbor is not, Gold Beach is, Port Orford is, so then you have to start removing those, those numbers.
And the same, if, if such a measure went in front of the voters, I, I think I would, uh, outline it as including the incorporated area and unincorporated areas, so all hotel.
Well, if it were a sales tax, and I don't know if this would be lawful, you could do the entire county because right now, all they have is a transient lodging tax.
But that's for the city?
Yes, but I've seen slips, motel slips from, from an individual that went to a county where they were doing a sales tax and a transient lodging tax. I don't know where those monies went eventually, but I would think there could be a sales tax as well as the transient lodging tax. And you could get the, the income from the city hotels and motels.
Okay. So-
But I just feel real strongly that property tax isn't the answer, so. And there could be some more income from assessors' offices going in and, and taxes as they're going in and capturing those, those, uh, places that aren't now paying their, their fair share on the taxes.
Yeah, but you, you would almost, I think the, the county assessed value is like twenty-two million or something like that, if I, maybe I'm wrong?
A little bit more, but not much, the assessor's sitting back there.
But that would go up if he went in and found all these places that are-
Yeah, but to, but to have a significant impact, that thing would have to go to like eighty-eight thousand, eighty-eight million dollars to even have any type of impact because of the small percentage that goes to the county in, in property taxes.
So now we're probably getting at the real issue, the way the big tax pie is allocated.
That's right. Yes.
So I have a question, um, and you talked about how to raise a lot of revenue and whatnot. Um, and we presented a balanced budget. Uh, we've possibly identified some needs, the towers, um, maybe some staffing issues with competitive salaries, maybe we have other infrastructure issues that, but how much money do you think we need to raise with one of these things? I mean, we got to raise money, we got to raise money, how much are we going to do with that?
Good question, I haven't, I- So that you don't, good question, I have, I think I have an answer for you, so that we don't go into the road reserve and, and use that money, and leave that in there to do the road maintenance and road improvements that the county needs.
So we took four hundred and something thousand out of that?
Well, it's more than four hundred thousand coming out.
So let's call it a, round it up to five, so okay, so we probably need to have five hundred thousand, and that might not even be in one, every year, we're not gonna hire four guys every year.
I understand, but in the last three years, you've taken over, out of over, like three, over three hundred, three million dollars.
Sure.
Mr. Huxley did an analysis that he presented to us.
So, so let's say we do need, so, okay, four million over five years, so let's say we need a million a year then, I guess, I, I don't know, I don't know what the number is we're aiming for, and then the question is, would we get it with, what, what would, you know, what's, you know, we need more revenue, we need more revenue, okay, identify what you need it for, and then figure out what's your best thing to get that number with, but, you know, if we just raised property taxes, or try to, and.
No, I would never suggest that we just raised property taxes, and try to bank into the number, I, I think the commissioners should get together with whoever they need to, to determine what that amount really needs to be, so that you don't borrow from Peter to pay Paul, and that's what you're doing right now, you've been doing it for years, five, six years probably, and no one has taken, taken the initiative, in my opinion, to look at different sources of revenue, except for property tax increases and the hotel luxury tax thing, property tax is usually where most counties get their resources from, you know, and I'm not saying, you know, up the, property tax is such a level that no one's gonna pay attention to, you might wanna do a step, you know, from sixty cents per assessed value, to maybe seventy-five cents per assessed value.
The voters may go for that.
And look at it from year to year.
An extra dollar ninety-two, or whatever was proposed.
You don't need to do it all at once, you know, do it to meet your goal, as to what you want the county to be, this gets back to budget planning.
Yeah, and I think, I think the other capital item that was mentioned, we had, it's a separate fund, but I think it's still a county fund managed by the Fair Board, but you saw the person from the Fair come in and say that, you know, that facility needs all kinds of, you know, upgrades, and deferred maintenance, and roofs, and, and then possibly expansions, but again, the question is, big, big picture things, and I don't know if, if this board has, if the Budget Committee has identified, you know, shortfalls in any dollar amounts in any areas, to, at least right now, for with sufficient specificity to say, well, what's gonna, what's gonna hit that number, what mechanism's gonna hit that number, I don't know if you guys have gone into, you know, that level, so.
No, we haven't.
I don't think so, but we have identified, like the towers.
Mm-hmm, right, that's what I'm saying.
Huge assets there.
Yeah, that's probably three-quarters of a million dollars, if not more.
That's just one component of it.
Right.
But we're putting a dent in it, at least, a little.
So, so right, but, and then, you know, with that, it's like, are there other sources, specifically earmarked, I mean, what, what else is out there, you know, do we need to go to the voters for, to solve that or not, anyway, lots of questions.
Yes, Tom. So, I'm sitting here thinking about what. Yes, go ahead Carl.
Court.
Court?
Hey, my hands were up for ten minutes, just. Thank you, real quick comment, just the fact that you're aware and bringing it up, as I said last week, we're gonna be trying to recruit you, and if you're unavailable, I'm sure you know some people in the communities that would like to contribute, I think the overall focus here is, how can we pool our resources, you know, healthy cities make for healthy county, and vice versa, and there's got to be a way to bring the county and the cities together, and save a lot, a lot of resources, so that's gonna be my focus, and see if I can contribute to that, and there's no sense taking anything before the voters, unless you're incredibly complicated.
Does the politicking ever stop?
Almost any plan, as you have stated.
All right, thank you, thank you, Tom, you had a question?
I'm wondering if it, if it would be a reasonable recommendation for next year's budget, to project what the anticipated, let's say, two or three year yearly increases in costs are gonna be, to project step increases, pers, health insurance costs, and then project what the yearly increases in income will be, property taxes, we know, can go, assuming property values go up, three percent, we have some, we can make some projections, and then make a budget that reconciles those two numbers.
Usually when we have these negotiations, they're usually at two to three-year contracts, this one actually is an opener, so our insurance costs for the county, they're capped, so the, the projection is a flat projection, unless you change it like we did in this meeting, so salaries are projected basic, based off of negotiations, and what was the other one that you mentioned?
I, I think I've just poorly stated.
I, I, there, I mean, there are, it's not like we don't do those things, because we do do those things, it's just that you, you get a one-year budget proposal.
Right, but when you put that, your, your, that yearly budget proposal together, do you look at how the county's gonna look in the future, and so how can we support future expenditures that we know are, are going to be coming, you know?
I, I have in, in the past, I have, this is my second budget with the county, the first one, we didn't have a county administrator, and it was my first budget, this one, I had a county administrator, but we did not do any projections, other than the ones that we already discussed, the five-year plans that we talked about, with the Sheriff's Department, the Road Department, IT Department, and Building and Maintenance, those, other than that, the county has not really looked at long-term projections, and I think a lot of it is because of so many uncertainties in this county right now, and it's hard to do those projections when they're just, well, that's where we are now, and six months from now, it's no longer even true, so spending an awful lot of time doing a five and ten year projection, is almost a waste of effort, in that, until we really know what this is gonna settle down to, it's hard to do that, I mean, the projection right now is, is that we don't have enough resources to, to continue without doing some major things, and so that's where we are.
That's why we're having this discussion.
That's why we're having this discussion.
Right, I know, I know it's hard to plan, especially for this county, you know, you're in a county that's only got three major cities in it, with very limited income coming in, and, you know, your only big source of revenue is, is property tax income, you know, I'd like to suggest, or, I don't know if I wanna make a motion or not, I don't know if it's necessary, but I'd like to see the commission, commissioners, you know, form some type of subcommittee or something, to really look at this, and, you know, and to meet as many times as is necessary, to come up with something realistic, to figure out how we can, you know, get some money in this county.
I'd like to see a different path, we've done this, we've done this almost every tenure since two thousand and seven, or eight, of the commissioners, there's committee after committee after committee, they come up with pretty much the same, I think it should try something different, and I'd like to maybe see something that says, what do the citizens want, they elect the commissioners who reflect their, 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 their deep down core values, of what they wanna do with their money, I'm not sure they always really think about how much government they want, but they do know, pretty acutely, how much money they, they wanna be liable to spend, or on the hook for, or how much money they've got now that they can afford to, to give to the county, or however it's, it's seen. I think it would be interesting to see what the voters, to make some effort on the commissioners' part, to, to start seeing what the voters want, what they see for the county, and, and have that be some kind of a, a means of understanding where the county government's going, could very well mean that they, government doesn't mean anything to them, could mean it's very important, we just kinda only really know at each election time, when somebody gets voted in, and it's not been productive, if anything, it's been very divisive, divisive. I, I would think there's gotta be venues for giving voters a good chance, multiple times, to express their desires, and refine that, and get them right down to, to understanding what it is that they're expressing a desire for, or against, and have that become a real firm understanding on all voters' parts.
So would you suggest some sort of a survey, or town hall meetings, or action?
My experience with the town hall meetings is that, the, all of, all of the usual suspects show up and, and voice, voice their opinions, and we've done that, I've done that with three different sheriffs, and trying to get a property tax approval, just.
I agree, I just wanted.
I, I think that's demonstrated, until something better comes along, that that's not a good way to go, but it isn't clear what it isn't a good way to go, is that the property tax isn't a good way to go, or to expect a small group of people meeting in a library, or a senior center, kind of determining what the county's gonna do, so to answer your question, I don't have a good answer, other than, if you get a multiple times, perhaps multiple times opportunity, to, to express voters, to express their opinion, bring things into focus, and multiple surveys, not just one grand survey, that's probably gonna be poorly attended, there must be some way to figure out how, how voters actually feel about this county, Mr. Huddlehead.
Oh, after, are you finished, Mr. Man?
Yes, I am, thank you.
So, I, I mean, is, we've had seven days of meetings on the county budget, this topic has come around and around, this gets advertised in the newspaper, it's on our website, you could probably count on one hand the number of citizens who've come here.
I was gonna mention that.
Yeah, is, is one answer, do nothing, and wait, Tom Brand says, what do the citizens want, you know, who knows, but is it to wait until they tell us, whether it's at the ballot box in electing commissioners, or by initiative petition, where they come to us and say, this is what we want, and completely leave it up to them, without trying to influence them, you know, I mean, again, I've worked here for a couple of years now, the biggest complaint I've seen from folks is that there's a lot of horrible, horrible nuisance properties in this county, that they'd like to be, see cleaned up, and, and other than that, I haven't heard personally a lot of complaints, I've heard some complaints about, you know, certain other things, but not on the volume as that, so if I'm listening to people who I'm not prompting, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
So I don't know what you guys are hearing, but if you tell them to show up and talk to the Budget Committee about it, I don't know, you know, what's happening.
You know, the two thousand and seventeen Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, was that a public forum, did they?
I believe it was, they have public meetings.
What was the attendance like, did it give you a good, do you mind know?
I went to almost all of the meetings, Commissioner Boyce was at them, he was an outsider to the committee, I was an outsider to the committee, Carl King was an outsider to the committee.
I came a few times, as my time allowed.
You came, nobody asked you one question about your opinion, or what you thought?
I was not asked to present anything to them, or anything, so.
It's, the Sheriff's Department came in, other than that, public citizen interest, not demonstrated, I can go through committee, panel, blue ribbon, same thing, I just don't think, I mean, one of the, one of the findings from trying to poll the citizens, see what they think about the county, is you may discover that you guys aren't thought of very much, meaning if you're the county, only when you're needed, and then it's, where are those people? Why do we pay all these taxes, you know?
Well, it's human nature, until you have a problem, you just kinda go through life.
Same here.
Where was the committee meetings held?
In the blue room, downstairs.
Yeah, so the committee didn't travel to all the different towns within the county, and meet with the local citizens, you, you assume that they would all come to you?
And I'm gonna say that.
It's like sending an email message out, asking for money, thinking that everybody's gonna give you money, you know, no one's gonna give you money, because they, that's an easy, that's an easy out, because they don't have to talk to you face to face, I know maybe that's a bad analogy, but, you know, maybe you need, maybe you need to do a little bit more face to face.
Can I, I'd like to pose a question, for everybody who came up here with a legitimate, and I don't, I really never felt that there was an illegitimate request of us, of the Budget Committee, for increases, or saving, or re-put in, I, I believe every one of those requests was legitimate, what would happen if, for everyone that came up, we said, okay, good idea, let's do it, what's the scenario we have when we do that?
Well, I guess just go to the road fund.
I would, I would call it the proposed budget that was presented in the budget message, but maybe that's too easy glib of an answer.
Well, as I told. Several years ago, that's what basically you guys did, you know, this is what, the second year that this committee's met?
We were twenty-two thousand dollars above the proposed budget this year, difference is in allocation, but the proposed budget was there, but somehow or other, you know, we haven't, we've come away here kind of, at least I have, a failure feeling, I haven't funded those necessary individual requests, I don't think I've done anything good here, we could've voted it the first day and said, accept the budget, and I don't think it'd be that much different than what we did after all this work, I'm not demeaning you guys, I'm, this is what I'm carrying out of here.
But I think we gained a better understanding of what is in the budget, okay, I think the increase was basically the insurance increase.
Most of it, yes.
Yeah, most everything else was, you know, we did take some money out of it.
But you, when you took the money out, you put it to another expense item.
Right, that needed to be, because if we didn't do that, then it would, it would show up again, okay, so yeah, if we had taken out the ninety-five thousand, and then add the insurance increase of another, what, twenty-three thousand, or whatever he said, you know, we would've saved a hundred thousand dollars, a little bit more, so I don't think that was money that was poorly recommended, you know, and I, I think, at the beginning of the budget, and I know we've discussed this already, you know, the people that fill out the budget, I don't think were given the necessary guidance, the same, you know, the county is, is short on money, I know you're doing a good job in your department, but you gotta cut three percent, or five percent.
That's what they have been doing for, like, I don't know how many years, that's what we did last year, we did a three percent cut, in materials and services, and you go to some people's budget, they don't have three percent to cut, you can't cut three percent of an electricity bill, just because you don't wanna pay your electricity, I mean, you still have that cost, so.
The biggest, the big expense, the biggest expense for the county is personnel services.
Is personnel services.
Right, and you had, every discussion that I heard for the last week and a half is, they're bare bones right now.
Staff-wise, and materials and services-wise.
Right, so the only other thing you can do is either you, you go to a four-day week, which helps you a little bit out monetarily, but you, you kill the, the employees, and their well-being, so to speak.
And they still have like a five days' worth of work, they just have to get it done in four days.
Right, so, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a hard nut to crack, but it, I would, you know, I know you did the Budget Advisory Committee, and I think maybe you should, we should do that again. and I think maybe we should do that again, but go out to the different cities within the county, schedule meetings, and meet with the people, at least give them the opportunity to talk to us instead of having to travel three or four hours to get here, someone would do.
I think that was done... Susan Brown went from... Held numerous town hall meetings, talking about the budget and so forth, so people were aware of it.
And what did she end up coming back with?
She was unelected.
Anybody who's... Tom Oxley had something he wanted to say.
I just had one, you know, to your... And I agree with everything that Tom Brand said as far as what hasn't worked, and hasn't worked, and hasn't worked, and hasn't worked. But to the $13,000, what wasn't said was, "This budget was increased by $1 million over last year."
13%?
$1 million. 13... Was it 13? Yeah, $1 million.
About half of that was for deputies, for the sheriff.
But it was $1 million.
So it isn't... The last year, we had a different kind of result in that from the proposed budget, we were under the proposed budget. This year, it's pretty much the same. As proposed, after some intellectual and tough cuts made before it ever got to us. Intellectual, I mean, thought put into it, so...
Do you have a comment from...
You don't mind taking a comment from Peanut Gallery back here?
That's fine. I hope you have the Peanut Gallery.
Good morning. Jim Cole in Curry County, S.S.R. I like the idea of where you're going with it. Just what I hear you both saying is there needs to be some sort of planning for the future. And it's been my experience, we have not been doing that. Couple of weeks ago, I got up here and requested that you come up with some sort of a roadmap as to what the county might be looking like or what the budget in services might be looking like in the next couple of years if we didn't use the road fund or other sources of income. Maybe I would suggest that you might encourage the Board of Commissioners. We might have an opportunity with the new county administrator coming on board. Perhaps they could be encouraged to have the administrator work with our county budget officer and do that projecting of what resources might look like for the next couple of years and what kind of services we might be able to provide with those. So we'd have that information to have these meetings around the county so we could let the people know what the next few years are going to look like if something doesn't change.
Right.
In addition to that, I mean, right now, you already know that you spent $450,000 or whatever it was out of the road fund. Commissioner Gold had the idea of possibly doing some sort of a sales tax. I don't see any reason why that couldn't be further discussed and possibly even make it to the ballot come this November. So I would love to see you encourage the commissioners to move forward with these discussions, whether it's with the committee or with the county administrator and the budget administrator. I appreciate...
Well, that's why I asked for this discussion to start. Because it is... It needs to be done.
Well, it does. And Commissioner Gold, you also mentioned economic development. Economic development, that's not the answer without some sort of other adjustment for the county. I mean, economic development, if the county wanted to raise $2 million in property tax for county purposes, that'd take about 1,000 new McDonald's restaurants in Curry County, so...
Oh, I realize our rate is low. And I think the overall picture, if you look at the big pie of where the taxes go, I think that's out of whack with all the different special districts. I really do. And it's very difficult to change that. And I know I keep bringing up the library, but there was a reason when that library first started, when they were building, for that particular tax rate. But by setting in a special district, then that goes in perpetuity and that tax rate is out of whack now. I think they're like $1.57 or something like that. So that's my point. If you look at the whole pie, the picture of where this special district money goes, then you see a different thing. The county gets a very small slice. Other, I guess it's the cemetery district gets the very smallest slice. The port down in Brookings Harbor gets a very small slice, where things are kind of out of whack. Some of these entities need more, some need less. And so there needs to be some way to get an adjustment there. But I know it's difficult. Yes?
Theoretically, every special district can decrease its rate.
They can.
They can't increase.
But what happens is, if they decrease it, the money doesn't go somewhere else to another special district. It just goes back in the taxpayer's pocket.
Sure. It's noon. Thanks, Jim.
Oh, that's what I was just going to say. It's the noon hour. You've adopted the budget and set the... Or, excuse me, you've approved the budget and recommended a tax rate, and that's the official business. You've had a level of discussion on funding options. Is it the will of the board to adjourn or, you know, continue later?
I'm just going to give you something, and we can discuss it further if you want. Can you distribute this? This is, I sort of call it recommendations, but it's sort of a summation of what we've talked about. And I just, I want to make sure that what the Budget Committee members, Carl and Tom and I, have discussed with you guys, and you've agreed to us in certain points that we just didn't hear a bunch of words, that actions start being taken to really review these things and set up some kind of...
Is your chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a side off here. Just a quick comment. Last Wednesday, I gave the Budget Committee and the Commissioners a starting point for consumption tax, the 3%. I did research. It wouldn't necessarily have to be that much, but hang on to that. And if you have any additional time, review it and see. The whole thing boils down to what would the exemptions be on that? And the second thing, can you incorporate the lodging tax on a county-wide basis and bring it all under one program? So all businesses that have the burden of collecting that tax have incentives and safeguard. That's all I have. I'm going to lose coverage. Thank you all again.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question. On a sales tax, is that directed? Are those revenues directed or are they county-wide distributed?
They are. A sales tax would be... First of all, you can write up the tax how you want, but we have power to do tax throughout the county. The TLT is a special statutory creature by state statute. We're allowed to operate within those purviews. But a sales tax is our own deal, and any tax has to go to the voters.
I like the sales tax.
That's why I was suggesting that, and it's done in other counties.
And we've looked into that. When Waddle and Rhodes and...
Nowland?
Nowland were looking into things. Or maybe it wasn't Nowland. Maybe it was kind of in between. Doesn't really matter. I think they deserve credit for looking into it, but I don't understand why they didn't go forward because the state stepped in and helped a lot in verifying and creating the numbers of revenues.
You know, it never went before the voters, the sales tax. Never come before the voters.
Well, yeah, so why... The question is, why... What kind of pressures were put on to not put that on the ballot?
That I don't know.
That's the question.
But I think it needs to be targeted if there's a sales tax so that it doesn't hurt those folks who are...
There's more of the transit-type expenditures. People come through the county.
I'd like to see it go towards the tourist trade-type things.
Yeah. Is there any questions on this?
Yeah, I think what we need to do is be sure that a copy of this gets to our new administrator, and we'll follow through on that.
Okay. And that will be in the minutes to do that?
Does anybody have a sense of what department members of you all feel? Is this going to keep going like this year after year after year and making it? And actually staying on 10-year dollar rule and be doing the same kind of heated discussions over...
You know what?
Distributions, but the county's still... Or is this not...
It's my hope that getting the administrator functioning properly will help alleviate a lot of this. We can be more focused. That's my hope.
Yeah, I would hope so. Ms. Rexley?
If you just look at the numbers, okay. And again, Tom's been involved in this, you know, back to the, you know, 2009 with the study, you know, on the sheriffs. I think they came back with the one recommendation started for $4,000, from 60 cents per thousand, and...
That would scare anybody away.
Yeah, absolutely, but...
No, we have not adjourned yet.
But what you have, and you know, it's been talked about here. For example, I'm just looking at, let's look at the demographics makeup of the county. It's the, with the exception of one county with about a... I can't think of the name, with about 1,000 people. Curry County has the largest percent of retirees in Oregon, as far as counties. One-third. So one-third are...
This is Ben, Oregon? Was it Ben, Oregon? I don't know what county they're in. Don't they have the largest?
No, no, not as far as percent. Curry County is the top, the second one. The top one only has, I forget the county name, but they only have like 1,000 people. But Curry County, one-third are 65 and over.
Nobody in this room is there?
So one-third are, you know, are retirees, okay? You have, when you have cost of living, you know, you can look at the social security COLAs over the last five years, 10 years, 15 years. You know, we're looking at limited incomes. You can look at one of the, you know, we talked about the expected 5%, you know, for the Teamsters, plus COLAs. And you look at the comparisons just there over the, again, five-year period or 10-year period, and it's about 5 to 1. In other words, that one-third is making an increases about 1/5 of what these other increases total for the county. You look at certainly your health insurance issue, you know, throughout the country, throughout the world, you know, and what's happened there. What you have is, in this particular budget of, what was it, 8 or 9 million? You know, you have, now we'd be pushing 1.4 million of that is just for health insurance premiums paid by the employer or by the county. You look at, we've talked about PERS, you know, and it entered some articles in there. And you look at the increases, which this county has no control over, nor does any other county. But two years ago, you know, it was an increase of 4% of payroll. This next biennial, which will, it will be, it's estimated, it will be another 4% to 5% of payroll. And you add all those things up, you can't even keep up with some of those increases. Again, you know, we've talked about the payroll is the largest, certainly percent of things. Material and services certainly is substantial too, but personnel payroll is the largest. And you have all these things, and we're talking about, you know, a transit lodging tax that's going to bring in a little bit here or a little bit there. And you just look at some of these statutorily mandated things that we know none of us have control over. And it's 4, 5, 6, 7, 8% of payroll. You can't continue to do that increase, even if it's not within your control. You can't continue to do that and keep up with things. You just...
You know, I wonder how much the public understands that, or even if they're interested in it. But have we ever made an attempt to actually explain to them?
Yes, yes, and yes. And Tom said, you know, not, yeah.
It's not a new topic.
They just...
I'm a new guy. Most people don't care.
Yeah, frustrating, yeah.
Most people, it's not...
If it doesn't affect them directly...
In the moment you're talking...
More indirectly is what's happening.
What do you think? What do you see the future?
I think it's 10 after 12.
Sure.
And we've gone over this like, you know, five times during these meetings.
I'm sorry.
And I think it would be nice to adjourn.
I'd just like to make one statement.
But it's a good... Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to make one statement, then we'll adjourn. Louise, thank you for doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for doing a great job. Appreciate it. You guys have done a really good job as the Budget Committee.
This meeting is adjourned.
I don't have any chocolate.